Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order August 24th, PCBA meeting. Well, please.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Chairman Patel.
Here.
Chairman Seaworth.
Commissioner.
Yeah, Commissioner. Sure. Everybody's chairman tonight. Commissioner Seaworth.
Here.
Commissioner Rigel.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
And Commissioner DeGraff is absent by prior notice.
All right. Any comments on the minutes from the July 27th meeting?
I have just one small comment. The case number is on page three. The bottom case 23-11. The dimension there, it should be... It's reduction of the required side yard setback from 15 feet to 13.42.
Oh, not 42 inches.
Right.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And that's the same on page four.
Okay.
For the motion.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, can I please have a motion to approve the July 27th minutes as noted?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. We have one case, all business, PCBA case number 23-10V. The applicant is Philip Kohansky at 910 Sherwood and Prospect Heights, 60070. This is a continued case. The request is a variation to reduce your yard setback for, in addition to a single-family home at 910 Sherwood Drive. Can I please have a motion to reopen the case number 23-10V?
I'll make that motion.
I'm going to say it.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Ziggy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? See, the applicant is here. Do you want to... Is there anything that you would like to add at this point?
The only thing I'd like to remind the applicant is you're still under oath. And if anybody else would like to... No, we've done this one. They haven't already done.
Yeah, I can... Sir, if you would like to speak to the case, if you haven't been sworn in, I can swear you're in now.
Well, I haven't been here before.
Okay.
I was in a... I'm in here because I could make a doctor's appointment.
Okay. All right. If you'd like to speak to the case, I can swear you're in, so we can get that out of the way.
My name is Benedetto Grana. I'm on 9 Oakwood Drive. He got his swif.
Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. You can have a seat now, and then when we're ready, we can call you in.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. We can ask the applicant to maybe give us a quick brief of what has changed since the last time we spoke.
Yes, thank you for having me here, you know. And I take under consideration, especially with Mr. Machi told me, you know, and suggested. And he went back, you know, and discussed this with my architect. And I was asking for the reduction of my easement, of my setback, I'm sorry, from to 15 feet about. And, you know, after consideration, all the... whatever you suggested also, I would like to reduce only to 30 feet. So, right now, my setback is set at 50 feet. I got 70 feet to my neighbor, one side and the other side. And we decided to put smaller structure, which can be attached to the main building. And it's going to be the same height, same roof, same pitch, same everything, same look, like the other side, other, you know, portion of the building.
Okay.
There will be no differences. And it will be also behind the trees. So, when I build this, I'll be able to build this addition. There will be no trees removing at this point. So, that's very nice, because this way, the structure is not going to be that much easy, visible from the street. I took under consideration some other suggestions, you know, which is, you know, presented by Mr. Patel, Commissioner Patel, to build a freestanding garage. But, you know, I discussed this with my architect, and also with some neighbors, which absolutely they told me, you know, if you're going to build the, you know, the detached garage, it's going to look ugly. It's not going to be nice. And... Hello, guys. Hello. And it's not going to be looking, you know, nice for the... It's not going to be that much pleasing with the property. It doesn't match with the neighborhood at all.
Uh huh.
You know, because there is only one person with a freestanding garage, but this one is on a... also on a corner property. And they absolutely... they don't have any trees or anything like that. And it doesn't look nice. But within our, at least 50 properties, which they're very close to my building, there is no freestanding garages.
Okay.
And also, why, you know, we have difficulties I would like to mention, because not everybody here... See, this is the... our zoning map, or I'll have to show you guys. This is how the... everything is set up, you know. I believe I am correct, you know, where this property is here. This is the driveway front. Front, 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 right. And this is rear, 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 rear. And, you know, per zoning, if there's a rear, the setback should be 50 feet. If you're driving on the street, nobody can see, you know, you know, what's in the rear at all.
Right.
So, you know... But unfortunately, with my property, you know, my property is different, you know. This is absolutely... this is correct, like it says on the maps. But it's supposed to call that in my property. This is supposed to be side. This is supposed to be front. This is my entrance, my door, my, you know, I have a garage on the side here. And this should be called side. If this may be called side, I wouldn't be here.
Right.
You know, and this is what's supposed to be. And now, also, like other people, when they have a side buildings, you know, I mean, like I showed you the other properties, they have garages as close as six or 10 feet from the other neighbors. My garage is located 70 feet from other neighbors. Seven, not six, 10. Everybody got the six, 10 feet from the garage. So, what I was thinking originally to bring the garage as close as 15.4, almost 16 feet to the, you know, to the next agent property. And then, you know, you kind of suggested that's going to be too big, so absolutely I downsized it, so it's going to be only 30 feet. And this is front of the main building, but, you know, by design, you know, it's... I can give it to you guys.
You have a copy?
A couple copies, so it can look closer. And those...
At the end, we'll need to get copies to put with the record that you presented these as new evidence.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just select out, so you can get some, take a look, for the picture. I have lots.
Yep.
And I got a phone call today from... One second, let me see. Okay. I'm ready for any questions.
Is there any questions from the commissioners at this point?
Can you speak to how many garage doors you're planning to have?
One extra garage door. Total of two garage doors.
So, two double doors. Two car garage doors.
Right. Two car garage doors. I observe other neighbors, they have three garage doors, you know, in the properties. And they pretty good with it. So, my property, there's going to be only two garage doors, identical, you know, the whatever I have here is going to be on the left duplicated.
Can you point out where the other garage door would be located on this plan view?
Yes, absolutely. One second, let... I got the picture, I'm sorry, one second. Let me see if I got it. Oh, here I go. This is close up. I got only one picture, so you can see it. It's going to look like this.
Got it.
Same height, same roof, like this.
Yes, we'll need that as part of the record. What I'll do is, we will, at the end, we will designate it as group exhibit number 11, presented by the applicant, once we get all the images.
Do you have any questions?
So, and just to correct, last time, my suggestion wasn't a detached. My suggestion was just reducing how much... You had more garage than house when you were done with it. Now you have more. I just did the co-coup. You have almost a 50-50 ratio, which is considerably better.
Thank you.
In terms of how much garage to house. You have about 120 feet total of house, that'll be, and you're about 65 garage, 55 a house, which is about right. Before, you were 140 feet total, and of which 85 was garage, and 55. So, if it was me building it, I'd want an attached. I wouldn't do the detached either. So, detached was... Maybe there might have been some misunderstanding, but it was always attached, but not till it looks like so much garage. And I think this kind of falls exactly what I was... what I would look for. So, this... I don't have any questions.
Maybe you misunderstood, but I was under the impression I received a suggestion...
We did mention it.
Right.
Yeah, I think I might have mentioned it, or Janet might have mentioned it.
And I think we also talked about maybe a perpendicular... a garage that was perpendicular, so it wouldn't be such a...
One wall?
One wall of the garage, being so extensive that if you turned it perpendicular, like the other part of your house is, that you would just see the side of the garage, instead of the full face of the garage.
Right. It doesn't look that big from the street, because it's going to be on the side. This garage go... If I'm looking at my far end of garage, this garage is like this. This one is going to be like that. So, and this, like I showed you guys on the picture, kind of, they fall behind the trees. And those trees are up front of my property. Well, you guys call side, but that's my front of the property. And, you know, the tree stays. With a freestanding garage, which I have an option I would like to mention, yes, I can put this garage freestanding, actually, anywhere. Anywhere. And I'm allowed to remove the trees, you know. And also, it kind of helps me out, from the... to leave... well, the garage is available for me to put it up, you know, the freestanding, detached garage, you know, hey, why don't I make it attached? It would be nicer, same, and it would go and be matched with the whole neighborhood, because everybody got, you know, nice one building. Some other people, they have a different size garages, I see. Small door, big door, bigger door. They can drive even van with a ladder, and it's on the top. Mine, no, it's going to be the same height and pitch and size. So, it's going to be... looks nicer.
So, the exterior is going to be brick as well?
Yes, absolutely. Everything is going to be the same brick. I find out, the brick is available, the brick was used from 10 years ago, and this brick is still available to purchase.
Is this going to open up to the existing garage, or you're taking that one wall out? So, you have it for...
Yes. It's going to be one nice big area, because the other garage, decommissioned garage, as a purpose of the garage, it's not going to be a garage. It's going to be in my, you know, house area. It's not going to be used, you know, mainly as a garage. So, and I would like to add, you know, my property, you know, size, and if we have in relation to my building, my building's about 3,000 square feet, I believe. And existing buildings, 3,000 square feet. And if I would like to make addition, which I consider this garage as an addition, I'm allowed, you know, per zone and per my dimensions and everything, to put additional 3,000 square foot of addition. So, you know, I'm not planning to do any addition as like that big size. So, I just decided about 1,300 square foot, you know, small garage. It's going to be... it's going to be that big, because it's going to be deep. So, this is why the square footage comes to play, because it's going to be deeper, you know. So, it's going to be flat, it's going to be long and everything, absolutely. But I'm going to bring this up towards the street, which I... I'm not going across and the setback, you know, on the front of the building. That's going to be just... I'm looking to just change the setback from existing 50 feet right now to 30 feet about, yes. So, just ask.
So, I appreciate the fact that you shortened the building, and the setback is now 30 feet. I commend you for doing that. I'm wondering, the way you have the door on the new addition, if... how usable that triangular space is going to be? Is that... So, we are putting a door here.
Correct.
So, how effective is that going to be for a garage?
I'm sorry.
This triangular space here?
This space, how it's going to be used?
Yeah.
As a free space. I put a TV up to the couch, I put maybe, you know, something like this over there. So, maybe some tool boxes or something like that.
But this is the location of your overhead door.
Correct.
How you going to get your cars in? I think she...
I'm sorry, I have a small car. You'll see my car. I invite, you know, please.
I think...
My car is that long.
I think they come in like this.
Fiat.
Fiat, yeah.
The car is kind of, you know, very small. I do not have a... I have it every day.
If you didn't choose...
It's smaller than Jet ski.
Or you could...
And it's supposed to be... People, five, four people in Poland, and they go to Bulgaria for vacation.
Shape like a garage.
Yeah, I do see this being a potential issue with that. I think what she's saying is...
Yes.
In terms of design, it's considerable better, in terms of looks, but functionality-wise, pulling a car in and out, two cars in and here, it's like you come in and you got to turn to here.
Correct. But you see, you're thinking for me, you know, and this is incorrect, I'm not intending to put like a... drive two cars, for instance.
Okay.
If I put one car, you know, my... what I'd like to have, which I had, I would like to put him on the center, I would like to open my door. See, most of the people thinking two-car garage, most people may have two-car garage. If you put two cars, can you open both cars' doors at the same time? Why? No, because they hit each other. Basically, you know, the two-car garage, actually, it's like a one-car garage, if you only want up on the door, or connect furniture, your car. You know? So, this is functionality about this, I was thinking already, because I, you know, I put a motorcycle over there, you know, so this is like a hobby.
This is more of a hobby garage than a function.
Right. This is a hobby. I'm not planning to repair for anybody else. I don't repair too much. I don't know. I work with computers. So, you know, but my car, they don't have too much repairs. Maybe, you know, some kind of tuning.
So, one suggestion we had last time?
Correct.
If you can look at this. And not that you have to do this, but you can step up here. This is what we were talking about earlier, similar to what... You have a shape here. If you put the garages here, you can actually gain more square footage with the same variance. Whether you get this approval or not, this can still be added later. You're not... You don't need a variance for this anymore. But this was our thoughts. Then you have your garage pull in here, and this all becomes... So, this is secondary to what we're talking about today. If you get this approval, this is... You don't have to go for variance for this, right, Dan?
No.
Right? Because it's all within the setback still, right?
Correct.
So, this is just what our thoughts were, outside of this. Assuming you get this approval today, you could still go and do this, potentially, if you wanted to.
Absolutely. I was thinking about this.
Yeah.
But thank you for suggestion. This makes my bigger garage. But see, this is going to be... and this space is going to be like enclosed, you know, this is more often, I was thinking, you know. And absolutely, I go back to architect. Unfortunately, my architect lacks of 3D software, I'm sorry. Because I would like to walk through, I see this on the... take back, like people, they're doing designs, and you can walk before you... they build, unfortunately, this guy who built... this guy actually built this house on the...
Right.
So, he's working with it 10 years or so, or something. So, and yeah, this is something I'm just looking right now, just to... from 15 to shrink it a bit more, and then, you know, I understand your suggestion. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My... I think he's come back with a better design. It seems more in line with what I would think is good. I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can take... Thank you very much for your presentation.
The only thing I would like is if there's no more evidence to be presented, the pictures you wanted to show me. You had the two that had the fronts and backs.
For the neighborhoods?
Yeah. Just what I'll do is I'll add them all, because you presented them to the council. So, yeah. So, we've got his... the city definition zoning of lots, and how his interpretation of his lots are, and how it was used. And then he's got the rendering of the front of his proposed garage, and then, again, a front views with the setback lines. We will take these four images and add them as petitioner's exhibit number 11. It will be a group exhibit of four, and the four photos. Thank you very much for...
Thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Now, I would like to mention, since we kind of, you know, we have some new people, I would like to mention, you know, I went to at least, you know, around 20 properties, you know, to neighbors, very close neighbors, you know, those are the people, they drive by this building all... every single day. And they, you know, you have this on the packet number one, you know, everybody likes the project.
Yep. Thank you again. Sir, would you like to speak to the case? If you could say your name and the address for the record?
My name is Benedetto Grana, and live on 9 Oakwood Drive. Okay?
9 Oakwood?
Oakwood.
And how do you spell your last name, please, sir?
My last name? G-R-A-N-A.
Awesome, thank you.
Benedetto. Oh, Benny, whatever. Whatever comes to you. Okay, I guess everybody see the pictures or whatever, he wants to do it. I understand he wants to build the three more car garage, attached to the other one. I have against the idea, because I never see anything like this in a... in a neighborhood, or in the village, whatever it is. And I see a house with three car garage on 13 Stonegate Junior, which the other three car... two car garage are attached to the house, like you should. The other three car garage are in the back, you couldn't even see from the front. So, this, it doesn't make a difference, because the houses stay the same, it looks the same, and everything is the same. Now, what Mr. Phil wants to do, is to line them up in the garage, which... open them up at the door, for anybody comes in. From all... from the city, from the small place, they see this beautiful lots and everything, well, we can do anything we want around here. So, once they approve it for him, we open the door for a lot of place, a lot of people with the business, and things like that. Special landscape, which we have enough already. And so, I'm opposed on this idea to do this for now. This is a country garden. There's a lot of retired people, a lot of old people living in here. We got a... all lifetime savings invested in the house. And we pay plenty of tax. So, we don't like to see the change that he wants to make, because this is the straight of the old house. I mean, what is it? This a Motel 6? I don't know. You know what I mean? That's the way it is. So, I mean, I'll leave it up to you guys, whatever they want... whatever you're going to do. But I... I say, the change like that should not be done. There is another house on the corner, that's got four car garage, but the other two car garages detached from the house. They are separated from the house. They're not included in the house, that extended there. So, I'll leave it to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't even watch the scene, but...
Thank you.
I express my appreciation.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak to the case?
To just support. Yeah. The neighbors.
Okay. If you want to say something, I have to swear you in, and then you can come up and just say exactly what you just said. We got one grave soul.
That is one grave.
Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Deep Ti Verma. My address is 813 Derbyshire Lane, Prospect Heights, 60070.
Could you spell your name for the record, please? Thank you.
All right. I'm just here to support... We met him a few weeks ago, and then, you know, I heard about, you know, why he's appealing. So, as a neighbor, as a good neighbor, we're just here to support him, and hope his appeal is approved. And, you know, that's the main purpose to be here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to request a motion to close the public hearing for case number 23-10V at 7:25.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll start off the discussion by expressing that there has been a considerable change from the original. The applicant seems to have listened to our suggestions. That's what they are, they're just suggestions. I do think that we do have similar properties. I understand that changes is at times difficult, but we have other properties where the residents enjoy more than one garage on the house. And I do feel that the layout of the land is peculiar enough to warrant something, meaning that it's not intrusive to other properties. I've seen lots of support from neighbors. So, I'm leaning in favor of this variance.
The way I look at it, if he wanted to add two more... two more... two-car garage, without evidence, he can, because he has the additional 20 feet still. So, I don't think you can limit how many garages he has. It's going to give you... It's going to be the same amount of garages. So, now, if we can limit just to two, and make the approval based on that, so he can't add a third garage door in between, so it doesn't look like garage, garage, garage. I like the idea of angle garage, it hides it better. But, in essence, if he comes in here right now, and without even coming in, he can potentially add a two-car garage, and he'd have the same amount of garages. I think this actually looks a little better, and it has a little more brick to it. So, I think... I agree with Machi. I think you came out with a design that looks with the spirit of the neighborhood. While I understand what you're saying, you weren't here for the first meeting. We did have the same concerns you had in terms of more garage than house. Now, this seems to be more in line with that.
May I...
Absolutely.
To Commissioner Patel's question, the commissioners have, at their pleasure, to put conditions on approvals of the variations. They could be number of garage doors, they could be height restrictions, they could be limited to the square footage of the proposal, because that's what you're voting on tonight, is the proposal. And it could be that any future expansion of that may have to come back, if you so desire. So, we... ZBA does have some flexibility in establishing some conditions of... There's concerns about too much or too many doors, if that's what I hear you saying. So, that is there. It would just have to be couched as part of a motion.
Right. But we do have documents supporting this, with... especially with the addition of exhibit 11 depicting the style of doors, and... but we will note it in the motion.
And for your information, when the motion and recommendation comes from the PCBA, this exhibit becomes an exhibit to the council, and when the council votes on the variation, the ordinance will say that it has to be built in conformance with the plans proposed and approved. So, that's the other condition that protects, you know, from someone getting a variance and then totally going off in a different direction than what was approved by the ZBA and by the council.
I think those are really good...
I think those are really good points. Uh, I agree that it should be limited to the two garage doors. The other thing is that since the variance goes with the property, and, uh... If you should sell your house in the future, then the setback, um, variance goes with the property, and somebody could put up a two-story, um, building there instead. So, I would definitely wanna put in the condition that it has to be, uh, a variance to the setback for a one-story, um, addition.
So, I have, so far, I have two garage doors, same pitch of the roof, and single-story.
Yeah, and I don't know if you wanna include the square footage, because then it takes a little bit of the flexibility away from what you were saying.
Okay.
I wouldn't, and we don't wanna include the square footage, is what we're saying. If he wants to go to this design, he should be able to.
Yeah, that...
Yeah. He's proposed that this addition, according to his, uh, submittal, is now the, the proposed one-story addition, um, for the garage with no basement, is 1,230 square feet, of which approximately 20 feet in width, and approximately whatever the, that the square footages of that trapzoidal shape is, would be the extent of the variation.
Mm-hmm.
That's, and you're fine with that, from what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we don't need to limit it to a square footage, just a story. Yeah, a long story.
I would say, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any other comments? Well, in that case, I'd like a motion to accept into the public record, um, evidence and testimony presented this evening, including, uh, addition of exhibit number 11, which is a collection of, uh, pictures presented by the applicant.
I'll make that motion.
Second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Um, now, I would like a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number 23-10V, uh, which is a variation to reduce rear yard setback for an addition to a single-family home with the following conditions. That the addition will be a, um, the, the, that the total, the total project will consist of two garage doors. Um, the property will keep the same pitch of the roof, and the, um, and the variance is for a single-story building.
To encroach no further.
To encroach no further than, uh, than, uh, 30 feet. Uh, you think, actually, encroaches 20 feet.
Correct.
Encroaches 20 feet to a, to a distance of 30 feet from the, from the surrounding property.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, Roll, please.
Commissioner Seaworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Miszewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Reigil?
Aye.
Chairman Kempa?
Aye. All right, so, I don't have a date for the council.
Um, the, with the holiday, I'm gonna try and get this on, Philip, for the September 11th city council meeting, uh, for a first reading. Um, and it'll, and that, it'll be 6:30 in this room. And then the city council will, uh, will go through, it won't be as elaborate. We'll have the reports, we'll have the recommendations, but you will need to be here.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for support, thank you.
Thank you for testimony.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we have to continue, we don't have much, but we have to continue. Um, with, uh, no new business, uh, any comments from the public? Additional comments? No? Okay. Can we have a, uh, previous application update?
Um, a couple of items. Um, I've been informed by Crown Castle that work has stopped on the tower again. They, uh, found a significant stress fracture in the existing tower, so...
Existing, meaning the, meaning the, the old, the old monopole?
The monopole that, uh, they went to reuse, um, they, first permit, they did some fortification and strengthening. That tower then had the sway issues. They came back in with the new design to harden and reinforce it even further. While they were doing the work to reinforce it, they found some critical stress fractures in the existing 25, 26-year-old monopole. Their plan right now is to leave it there, because it can support the fire district. They're going to manufacture a new monopole in the same conditions to put back, so it will not have to come here, but it does delay that even further. So, um, the ever-ending saga of T-Mobile's monopole tower continues.
You got any idea?
Nope.
I'm sure the neighbors would be happy.
This just, this...
Ordering steel.
Yes, that's nothing.
Anywhere, you're looking at 18 to 24 months.
Uh...
And that's what we're going through, through combat. Just, once you have the design, the material of the backlogs, 18 to 24 months to order the steel, to add back.
We're supposed to be having a, um, huddle group meeting af, just after Labor Day to discuss what the Crown Castle plan is going to be. So, I'll keep, more to come on that one. Um, secondarily, um, I have followed up with Michael Blue from Tesco and Associates regarding the, um, zoning project, a zoning, uh, evaluation, audit, and rewrite. Um, we are going to be kicking off the next phase, because it's been a busy, crazy summer, uh, for, uh, both us here and with the Tesco. We're gonna be doing the second phase of, um, focus groups. We're going to have four focus groups come in and meet with that, and that's gonna represent, um... Critical property owners, significant property owners, such as the Chicago Executive Airport, representation, representation for Powellaki Plaza, Prospect Crossing, other, um... of the big property owners where their tenants are usually users of the variations, to get their feeling of the processes. We will have a segment of business, um, users that have gone through the process to talk about the processes, such as Plytech, um, a couple of the restaurant users, a couple of the other, um, users that have had to come through the process. We will have a residence focus group on the variation processes and the smaller special uses. And then finally, the, um, staff and regular users, um, fire department, myself, um, Public Works, um, engineering, to go through what those are. After that's done, um, those comments will be incorporated, and Tesco's already started doing a page-by-page, chapter-by-chapter best practices eval. So, don't have any timing, we're hoping to get those focused, uh, groups done by mid-September. I will be sending out invitations to key folks here in the next couple of days, and, um, go from there.
All right.
So, um, the other good news is Barcelado, speaking of delays in getting stuff, um, they still have their bar stools on F, on a freighter out in Vancouver, the harbor of Vancouver. Um, it's absolutely beautiful in there. Uh, they're probably gonna be renting bar stools for their grand opening, but it...
Which is when?
Uh, they're targeting just after Labor Day. Uh, we've had our first round of final inspections, and they've passed the health inspection. It went from being the worst restaurant in the east coast to the best in town with a change of ownership. It's gonna, uh, be amazing. So, they're targeting here in the next couple of weeks, uh, to do soft openings, and there will be, um, two, two possibly three soft openings before they go live.
Do any of those openings include the PZBA board?
Potentially, yes. Uh, they get, no, there will be an invite that goes out to city officials, they've already sent.
They're not officials, they're volunteers.
You are a city official. So, you, you, I heard you the first time.
Thank you.
Um, so that will be forthcoming. Um, other than that, um... Everything's, we will have a case next week.
Next month.
Or next month, excuse me. It feels like next week, it's been that kind of a summer. Um, so we will, we, we will be having a, a meeting, um, an application, it will be on our desk on Monday.
Okay.
What's the situation with Lexington? Do they ever, does the property ever sell?
No. Um, the, a number of factors came into play. They found out at, just after we went through all the processes, that the two of them had let the contracts lapse, and they never executed the closing. So, however, all of our ordinances were passed and, uh, recorded, and the TIF district has been collecting money, and will continue to do so. Uh, the owner, um, has significantly raised the price, which then changed the financial reality of the project. And at this point in time, I'm not sure if they're talking to each other.
The owner's not very keen, I think that they have one particular use that's available, that wants to use it. There's, it's gonna be hard to find someone to do that. He's spent a lot of time on that project.
The, the issue is, is, um... There was a very, very specific development project that drove the TIF, and that was to be able to give water. And because of the way that the, the TIF, under state TIF law, you can have TIF in two different fashions. One is build it, and they will come, and the city takes on all the liability, and they fund things, and they buy property, they bond, and they go out on a limb. Uh, the city did that back years ago for the stadium property on the east side of town, and it cost the city a lot of money. So, when Lexington became, came forward with this one, another method is to design a TIF for a specific project because of the infrastructure costs and exorbitant costs that was needed to do that. And that was justified and established under statute for the water system and the stormwater improvements. That being said, it's very finite. So, now, the owner, because they never terminated it before everything was passed, that's the development that needs to come. So, she has to find the buyer to do the same project, and the likelihood of that is happening, if she wants to get the money she thinks she can get out of it. If the, if those dynamics change, now we'd have to go back, any project that comes in, we're gonna have to reevaluate the economics, just because the economic conditions have changed so drastically in the last year and a half. So, uh, right now, um...
Or they'd have to come back for a rezoning, right?
They would have to come back for...
For something different.
They'd have to come back for a TIF district dissolution, then we'll have to, we'll have to take out what money the city is still owed for all our, because we're, mostly the work we've been over the last four years, we were gonna get reimbursed on the back end. So, then it's an accounting process, and that, that has to be dissolved first, which typically doesn't happen. I don't think I've ever seen a TIF district get dissolved once it's been established. And then, um, it would have to be the, it would have to be a project significant enough to have the economic drivers to, to meet the expectations for the project. Yeah, so there's a lot of things going on with that. Um, we will probably be having a case come up for a rezoning, probably sometime November, or just after the first of the year, for a town, a different lot, for a small town project. If they can close on the property. And they will need no entitlements other than, uh, uh, reuse, they will need entitlements for rezoning, and maybe a little PD help, but no TIF. It'll be just a straightforward development project.
If something is townhouse, does it have to have water? It can't, it can't have a lot?
No, it can have, well, you just have to design the system into it, that, you know, we'll see what happens with this one. So, that's a quick update of what's been going on.
Thank you for putting the, um...
Yes.
The exhibit up on the screen.
It helps greatly.
Not a problem, I will...
I did get comments from, uh, somebody that was here at the last meeting, and they, one, they, um... They gave us a, a shout-out for trying to work with the applicant, instead of just denying the, um, the proposal. They said that they enjoyed actually watching the process, but they said it would have been helpful to, to see the, we were talking about.
Mm-hmm. One of the things that, that, and you guys did a great job, and went way above and beyond in trying to assist them and stuff, what's really hard in that is because being away from the microphone and doing that, it doesn't get caught. Also, we don't have the capabilities yet to do like a John Madden telestrator. But, you know, hopefully sometime in technology, we'll be able to catch up. But, uh, I think, um, in this particular case, Mr. Klatchansky, um, took the heart of your comments, and, you know, to at least, uh, take the heart that he was asking for it all, and, you know, to come back to what was more a reasonable request, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Uh, motion to adjourn, please, at, uh, 7:46.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.